Agenda, Tuesday, August 6th, City Council Regular Meeting.
So moved?
Second? Approval of the agenda?
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, consideration of the minutes of July 2nd Regular Meeting and the July 8th Work Session.
I have some things.
Okay.
On the work session, um, the first paragraph on page three of six, it says, "Adam said they have proposed a technical which will allow the unpermitted rentals to be subject to the same suspensions and penalties as those with permits." I wasn't sure what that meant.
Technical change?
Techni- technical changes. I guess that's it.
You're all good? Anybody else? Kate, I need a motion then for the-
Move, we approve the minutes of the July 2nd Regular Meeting and the July 8th Work Session with, um, Robbins Corrections, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Seconded? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that takes us straight into our public comment section of the evening. Is there anybody? Jan, please.
Jan Seibert-Worman, P.O. Box 778, Cannon Beach. Dear Mayor Sam and City Councilors, the Cannon Beach Friends of the Trees Group would like to share with you copies of our tree stewardship plan for your information. We've already shown it to the Cannon Beach Parks and Community Services Committee and the Cannon Beach Planning Commission. We've received some helpful suggestions from them and from some of the CB city staff. We know you've got a busy agenda tonight, so we thought we'd just give it to you to read at your leisure after this meeting, and then perhaps at a later date, we could talk with you about it. Or if any of you have questions or suggestions in the meantime, please feel free to contact me. Lastly, the maps mentioned are maps of our Cannon Beach city parks, and we can get copies of those for you too, if you'd like. Thank you, and I'll pass them out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Missing. Oh, here it is.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. Joyce Lincoln, three decades in our wonderful town of Cannon Beach, Oregon, thirty-two years as a business owner. As you drive into town from the North End at First and Hemlock, you look down Spruce. You do not get the impression this is a business district. Your instinct is to turn right and go down Hemlock. Please consider a small sign on the existing post saying "Spruce District." This would help define and locate many of the oldest businesses in town that are on that street or in that district. Spas, restaurant, gallery, um, and I think it would be easier to give directions to people if they, we had just tiny ex- couple of two literally extra signs identifying that. Please consider this district distinction. It is a standard, it is a norm, it does imply that in fact there are businesses in that area, and we would be deeply, deeply grateful. The way the town is laid out, it can be of a bit of a mystery if you're downtown, just getting from Spruce to Hemlock or Hemlock to Spruce especially on a dark rainy winter day when we really need to see people. So, thank you very much for your time. Questions?
Thanks, Joyce. Anybody else? Come on up.
Elena Tegir, P.O. Box 474. Just to go a little bit further on the Spruce District, as we all know, it's quite busy. We have lots of traffic repeatedly, always in the summer. I really would ask that we at least consider making it one way on Hemlock to first come around, one way on Spruce. We will never have more parking for our visitors to accommodate them all. However, if we can make the traffic flow in a much more consistent manner without stopping, starting, visitors trying to run across the street, trying to flip U-turns in the middle of the street because there's a parking space over there, but you're heading this way, I think it would alleviate a lot of headache for all of us. No more parking, but the traffic would move smoother. This has been something that's been brought up before consistently. The answer is, it won't work. No one knows if it won't work until we at least try it. It's the same thing about a three-way stop on Hemlock and Spruce. We all stop there anyway because people are crossing the street. I get it, Bruce. I know that it only backs up to the highway sometimes, but it does, and it's very, very dangerous. We're quite lucky no one's been killed yet, but perhaps we could stop saying "it won't work" and try it, and then if it doesn't work, we can go back to the way it was. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Anybody else? New face.
Hi, Aaron, Council members. My name's Danella Broad, and I live, my family owns a piece of property at seventeen sixty-four South Hemlock, right in front of Haystack Rock. My parents have owned that place for twenty-two years, and I've been visiting Cannon Beach since the seventies, and my mother's eight years old and has been coming here for nearly that long and has memories as a toddler out on Haystack Rock. First of all, I wanted to second everything I heard the prior three people saying. I've been living here now this summer for five weeks, and the growth in Cannon Beach is noticeable, and the traffic flow and parking issues definitely need to be dealt with, and I do a three-way stop anyway on Hemlock right now. But what I really wanted to say came to, I came to say three things, and it's around Haystack Rock and the life on it. I wanted to say first that you have an asset. You have an asset down there. I've been volunteering, I decided to volunteer because I can see the rock and the pressure that it gets every day, and the red truck can't be down there all the time. So I went out there and I volunteer. I volunteer out there with my nine-year-old daughter and my fifty-five-year-old former Marine husband who is a teacher in Portland when he's not, when he's working in the summer. He's not working and he's here with me, helping me volunteer on the rock. So, I want to make a point that it's a rock and it has life on it. In the past two and a half weeks, I've had over two hundred conversations with people from all over the country and world, and they are absolutely amazed at what they see. They want to know where the sea stars are. They want to know where the puffins are. When they see that that rock is alive, covered with live animals, they linger longer. They take pictures, they recognize that they are seeing a slice of God's creation, and this is a very rare thing. A woman who could barely get herself across the wet assisted sand, the wet sand assisted with her two canes was coming here on her fortieth wedding anniversary with her husband. He was helping her, and it was on her bucket list to see a puffin. It is, it is the life on this rock, if the life on this rock were to disappear, much of what bring people to Cannon Beach and what, much of what brings them back to Cannon Beach would disappear. Visit, so the second thing I want to say about tonight to you is that visitation at the rock is growing at what appears to be an exponential rate. I hope you're, you're supporting the rock and the life on it as much as you possibly can. Humans are thriving on this planet, and we cannot say the same of other creatures who we share this planet with. And third, I want to thank you for making Cannon Beach the beautiful place to vacation and live for the summer and come on weekends from Portland, um, and, which is what my family's been doing for over three decades, and I thank you for the investment that you make to make this a beautiful town and a functioning town. And I want to thank you also for the emergency preparedness work you've done. That's the type of forward thinking that puts small and large towns and cities on the map. So, continue with your forward thinking, and I really appreciate the time to make comment today. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, last chance.
Thank you. My name's TJ Beeler, um, and I live at one forty South Hemlock Street, and I'm a partner at Cannon Beach Vacation Rentals. And I'm speaking tonight regarding the upcoming short-term vacation rental ordinances that are before you all. And I have sat in on a couple of the Planning Commission meetings and now a couple of these work sessions and so forth. And as, as I've listened, it's, I've learned a lot, and it's been a really quite enriching experience just in terms of how you all go about thought processes and what to do, and so thank you for that. The one thing I've struggled to walk away with as I've left those meetings is a real discernible way to measure or even to define what your objectives are around those things. I know the issues. I know the issues of parking and, and the everyday license issue, the character and livability of our neighborhoods in town. I, I know the, the issues. I think we have to be very careful, as I think about it going forward, about further regulating this industry before you've laid out any measurable way to, um, measure the goals of what you're trying to, to, to solve. So, because if you don't, it just becomes, well, you know, we, we placed further ordinances on short-term vacation rentals and, and it worked, but then the question is, well, what, what worked? What is exactly that we were trying to, to solve? And it's, it's, it's been a thing that I've had a hard time coming to understand. And then the last piece of it is just data. I know Jeff's put together a lot of good data, and I think going forward, using that to direct us on really a more empirical-driven thought process as opposed to a more judgmental thought process will serve us well. I think the next couple of years are going to be really valuable, but I think we have to let them play out and be valuable to us. So, thanks very much for letting us talk, and thank you.
Thank you, TJ.
My name is Lisa Kerr. My address is Post Office Box ninety-four, Cannon Beach, Oregon. I think what our objective is, or what I hope one of the objectives is, is to further community building when we enact our ordinances. And by community, I'm talking about people who live here in this community all year round and are part of the community all year round. I'm not saying that people who are here part-time or vacationers don't matter, I'm not saying that at all, but I'm saying that I think that what the objective is, referred to by the last speaker, is to make this community more livable. And I think that the five-year unlimited lottery rentals do not do that at all. Somebody living on a street, that's a residential street, with an unlimited five-year rental on that street with them may as well be living next to a motel. There is no difference, except that a motel has an on-site person taking care of it and supervising it. And a five-year unlimited short-term rental has nobody there and new groups of people coming in constantly, and when people stay here for a little bit longer period of time, they tend to get more invested in the community. The neighbors start to recognize them, they recognize their cars, they recognize their pets, they recognize their children, and it feels more like a community. When people come in for one night or two nights, it's more like a stopover, a pit stop on the way, and that is oftentimes how those places are treated and how the neighborhoods are treated that the five-year unlimited lottery rentals are located in. So, I would hope that this commission is interested in passing ordinances that will enrich and foster a culture of good neighborliness and stewardship in our communities, not one that will discourage it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa. Elaine? You should probably do it now because that's not really a public hearing time, so if you want to, please do it now. And anybody else, if you want to talk about it? Yeah, I didn't catch that either, but, yeah.
Council, thank you for taking your time this evening and putting in time. Brian Olson, P.O. Box ten sixty-one, I'm a partner at Beachcomber Vacation Homes. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again about the proposed changes to the short-term rental ordinance. As I was able to speak at length at your last work session, and as my testimony is now part of public record, I only take a few moments of your time tonight. During the work session, we are all open, you were all open to the idea of creating a committee charged with gathering the ideas about possible changes to the short-term rules. It has occurred to me to ask you that you would consider postponing any changes to the short-term ordinance until the group has been formed and has had a say, say six months to work together. I'm not suggesting that you postpone the changes regarding the technical changes, the teeth to this ordinance, but I am asking that if you would consider holding off on any changes to the lottery or the fourteen-day license. I believe the city would be best served by making changes once rather than change things now and then possibly change things again in six months. Allow the committee to come together and submit ideas to you so that changes made will be solid and strong and in the best interest of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brian. I was just told that the ordinance discussion does have a public hearing pace, so we will again be able to talk about that. So, Elaine will wait. Anybody else want something totally different? Bob, come on up.
Apologize, I'm sort of unprepared. Got through another long, um, high. Bob Necker, um, P.O. Box ten twenty-one, Cannon Beach, Oregon. Northwest Point Northwest Galleries, who I'm representing at the moment, thirty-two year business here, and I'm not sure we're going to have a thirty-three years. The summertime has become pretty much a nightmare for our business. Every day we get people coming in telling us that they don't come downtown during the weekends, they don't come downtown during the week because there's no parking, there's garbage all over the place, they are frustrated by the fact that they just can't seem to be able to enjoy Cannon Beach as they may be used to or would like to. We've talked about parking for a long time and nothing's been done. We spent fifteen thousand dollars two years ago bringing in a young consultant who pretty much was driven out of town, I guess you would call it, because nobody seemed to respect what he presented. I personally am really tired of it. I'm really tired of worrying about the fact that not just my business is in stress because of it, but because there are other businesses in stress because of it. Cannon Beach can become ice cream and beer and pot shops if they want, but at some point you're going to realize that it's gone too far. We have to address the parking issue. We have some options that I've thrown out a few times before, other people have. One of them is the church property. I've talked to most of the people at the church on an informal basis, and they said that except for some wedding receptions during the summer occasionally and Sunday mornings, we have seventy-five spaces there unused. One of my problems is that I am not privileged to have a lot of employees. A lot of people do. Unfortunately, I don't think they realize that their employees take up, I have no idea of the statistics, but when I come to my gallery, which I think most people know, which is pretty much all the spaces in front of us and the tennis court and more are taken by latest ten o'clock in the morning. They're either taken by some people I'm sure who are going to the beach for the day, but a lot of them because I recognize the cars are employees. We have to address this issue. It's destroying a lot of the good businesses in town, the old businesses in town, while the new businesses come in and because they want quantity, that's what they get, and they don't even get good quantity. Because if people spend hours circling around, believe me, they come in your store and they're not going to spend as much money or enjoy themselves as much as they might if they had some kind of parking availability. I believe that the parking problem is not just a parking problem, I believe it's a traffic management problem. Too many times this summer I've watched our young people on their bicycles who are the information officers riding together two at a time. Why? Why are they spending time together riding in the North End, South End, when downtown and midtown are both a mess? And they are a mess, and I don't think anybody can deny that. I don't know if it's time parking. We had someone running for office last year who was pushing that. I don't know if it's metered expensive parking. I also believe that RVs take up too much space downtown during the summer, especially every weekend. We know if it's ninety or eighty-five degrees in Portland, this town is a madhouse. We need to do something. We have to address this problem, even just from a safety, air quality, quality of life. We have to do something. What that is, I'm not a genius, I don't know. I'd like to see a committee, or at least people who care and who know what to do, because it is, it's ruining this town. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, our close the public comment, we'll move to our ordinance. Jean? One more public comment, okay. Last one.
I'm going to read this so that it'll be short, for what they. I'm Jeannie McLaughlin. What else do you have to know?
Post Office Box, please.
Oh, P.O. Box six-two-three, Cannon Beach, Oregon. And I just met some Texas folk, took them to the Driftwood, and so I didn't really get to go over this much, but, um, anyway, sadly prayers and positive thoughts are not enough to stop or even to reduce America's mass shootings. Each one of us can make a difference in various ways with neighbors, friends, parents of school-age children, teachers, school board members, police, relatives, legislators, pastors, and yes, even our guests, you know, our visitors. For starters, well, anyway, and then I'm going to say, I want to thank very much Jason for his work with the city for starting an inclusion city here, and we have a, quite a significant minority, as you know, of Mexican-born people who are really hard workers, and I think they're a backbone of our, of our town. And so, anyway, I was going to tell you that my focus is to remember what Andrew Young, who was a former USA ambassador to the UN, said in the early nineties to a national school board meeting in Dallas, Texas. My mother, who was on the school board in Weatherford, Texas, invited me to attend when I was teaching English as a second language in Comfort, Texas, near San Antonio. He emphasized that, this is what I think is important, he emphasized that rather than the USA being a melting pot, we can choose to celebrate diversity rather than just tolerate people who look different than like the current white majority with a salad bowl approach. That's what he focused on. You're a tomato, somebody's a cucumber, whatever, you know. Anyway, with that kind of approach, except for our Native Americans, we are all immigrants. And I just think we're so lucky to have a small community here with, you know, the inclusion thing, and people like Wat Childress and Andrew who bring these family-oriented concerts in the park, you know, and, but we have so much more in common than what is different about us. I'm almost through. The same red blood runs through every person's veins. We all love our children, we want opportunities to work and take care of our families. We will increase our success as a country by taking care of each other and acting humanely. May we be alert to our fellow Americans like the two people who killed so many people over this past weekend, who act threatened by the vast majority of Mexican and other immigrants' appreciation for work opportunities and wanting often to get away from violence and all this kind of thing, you know. Children will return to school very soon. Surely we can ensure our children that they will be safe in the halls of learning and in their communities because we adults have tried our best to get to know and celebrate people who do not have the same color of our skin. Let us join hands and celebrate Hispanic and other ethnic skill sets of collaboration. They're really good team workers, you know, their work ethic and family values. That's all. Peace, pas y amor. Peace and love.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the public comment is closed, we will move to ordinance, uh, nineteen oh five. Purpose of amending Mr. Poe's short-term rentals. Jeff, you want to introduce?
Maybe if I just speak really loud.
Did you break it?
Yeah. So, first I want to thank you for bringing a shout-out to Adrian Young and Heather Georgia, man. Thank you.
But I didn't want, uh, back to the ordinance, uh, at the last work session, you guys, thank you, Rick, had, um, given me charge to do some slight changes to kind of get it into the final drafts order, and what I did in the, if you look at the, not the clean version, but the other with the highlighted section and strike-throughs, what I tried to do was reinstate that fourteen-day, take out the monthly, as, as you guys had directed me to. I left the language in on the five-year because, you know, if you want to defer it for the two-year period and, you know, change that and then bring it back, I would just strike that section, but I didn't do that because I had left it and I didn't hear whether you wanted to stop it for two years and bring it back or just leave it for two years, collect data, then make that decision. So, I just left it as it is currently in there. Then, I also, at the owner's option, I allowed that change, allow a self-managed short-term rental unit to defer penalties by changing to professional management. And then, last, the technical changes, I left that technical changes language that was in there, uh, that Council Member Rizley brought up earlier about the minutes. That's the component that brings back the, or allows us to go after those people that have been operating outside of the permit and to go after penalties for, for them. Did you, did you all have any other questions or, sure?
I had one, and it refers back to our meeting that we had previously on the eighth, and I mentioned at the time about the fire code, so I- So, I looked back in our minutes and it actually, or our paperwork, and it had to do with Mark Barnes and his report. And what he said that he felt needed to happen was in alignment with the fire code. State building code limits occupancy of an unsprinkled residence to a maximum of 10 people, while our short-term rental code allows occupancy in excess of this requirement. Our ordinance should be consistent with state building codes on this requirement. And that is page two of three of his report, Mark Barnes' report.
Back in October, is that the October report, do you think?
This actually was information we were given for our July 8th.
Okay.
But he, he actually wrote this July 10th of 2018. It's attachment C. So, I think we really need to be in compliance with what the state requires.
Yeah, that, I agree. And that would, you know, I think maybe he was saying that we should put that in as a technical change at the time. I don't know if he, because it was always my understanding was that, that we currently hold them to 10, and it was only the grandfathered ones, ends that were still above that 10 range. And we didn't, we don't, at the time I came on board, we didn't do short-term rental re-inspections of those older ones, if I remember. But, you know, it's something that we'll definitely, you know, make an amendment to change that if you want to as part of the technical changes and insert that. Yeah?
Because it's listed here, occupancy and parking, and it's talking about five bedrooms and saying 12.
Yeah, and see, but I think that that, but that is for the ones that were on the, is the grandfathered in unlimited ones. That's, they still have some of those that, that are above the state. So, if we go to a re-inspection kind of program, we can bring them into a line.
Instead of five-year.
That, that's for all, that's for all part, that parking table covers all. So, we can write that in as a technical change to 10 for all that.
Or sprinkle it.
Or sprinkle, exactly. Come into compliance, in other words.
Right.
Jeff, is my understanding that the council was going to be addressing the planning commission's recommendations to the ordinance that was presented to them, oh, I think way back in February. They had a hearing on it and continued it for another month into, I believe into March, and made a recommendation that the 14-day permit remain in effect instead of the twice-a-month. And they also recommended, they had some discussion on the five-year unlimited.
Right.
That perhaps that'd be, there was discussion, I'm not sure it really came out as a recommendation, but they did discuss having a two-year period and then evaluate whether it should be continued or deleted. And yet, when I read what was given to us for this packet, I don't see any resemblance to what was submitted by the council to the planning commission back in February, which was the city's intention to allow lifetime unlimited permits and five-year unlimited permits to remain in force until revoked or terminated pursuant to this chapter. When a lifetime unlimited permit is revoked or terminated pursuant to this chapter, it will not be replaced. When a five-year unlimited permit is revoked or terminated pursuant to this chapter, it will not be replaced. And frankly, as I read what was presented to us now, it doesn't, I don't see anything says, oh, that'll be the case, but in two years we'll evaluate it. What I see is something I don't even understand. It says the maximum period of time that a person may hold an unlimited five-year rental obtained by means of a random selection as described in subsection A of this section is five consecutive years. At the end of five years, such period, such permit will expire. That's fine right there, but that continues. And a new name will be selected, which may not be removed. I don't even understand what that means. But it doesn't seem to address either this council's first request for an ordinance change to then be commented on in a recommendation from the planning commission. For me, that was a recommendation from the planning commission, and now we have a new draft ordinance, which is not what this council asked you to do or the previous planning director to do. So, I don't know what to do with this other than just saying, no. I mean, it's not, I don't even know why it's here in this form. That's nothing that we, the council, had directed the planning commission to look at and make recommendations. They've made a recommendation, and then it got all cobbled up with this language that's been put in, which it could easily have been left just as it was and with one more sentence said, at the end of two years, which isn't enough, but at the end of two years, we will evaluate whether this should be revised. Instead, it's being revised in some strange way, and says in two years, we'll decide whether we want to do what this council asked us to do two years ago.
Yeah.
I object to this whole issue that was presented to us is not representing what the council asked for.
Well, that's, that's fair, but they're just giving you their recommendation on what, you know, you asked for. And they, that's all they're doing is giving their recommendation. And so, I, so I understand what you're saying, but my, instead of, you know, putting in that two-year phrase or Mark putting in that two-years phrase, I, I think that came on at the end there. So, you know, that, I don't know if that should even be in an ordinance. That's, that's a resolution or something saying, we'll come back and look at that in two years. But that's usually not put in as an ordinance. That's not part of that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, just leave it, I, I agree with you. I would have left it just like it is for the two years and then come back and make that decision on what to do.
Where does that leave us?
So, you can, it's, they're just giving you a recommendation. And so, you guys have the decision to keep the language in the ordinance as it is, which is what, you know, I think that the text stays the same until you, you guys deem to change it.
But the point is, we deemed to change it back in February, and planning director drafted an ordinance. Asked it by this council, said, is this what you intended? And we said, yes, take it to the planning commission. Planning commission looked at that and made some recommendations. That didn't come back to us. A completely new draft of a new ordinance came back to us, and it's not what we asked for.
I know.
Now, we're supposed to rule on an ordinance that we never asked for. I'd like to rule on the ordinance that was submitted to the planning commission and compare their recommendations to that ordinance draft and discard this one. I don't know, does anybody understand what I'm saying?
I, I do understand what you're saying. I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'm kind of caught in the middle. I have to go back and get that. But I'm happy to do that. I mean, I think you guys have the discretion to do that.
Can you tell us what the planning, can you remind us what the planning commission recommendation was?
Yes, it was to, for, on the 14-day to five-year, I mean, the five-year, get rid of the five-year. The idea for the five-year was that they believed that they don't have enough data, so what they were going to do is allow a two-years suspension of any new five-year ones until with a better data. That's their recommendation, so.
So, that's what we should really be thinking about tonight, shouldn't it?
Well, that's, that's their recommendation, right.
Yeah, so that's what we should be considering.
We should consider that recommendation, but in light of the ordinance that they were asked to review, not the one that's before us today. And in that one, we could, as a council, say, through resolution, we will leave it as it is with it terminating when they expire. Then in two years, we will go back, not in the ordinance, but in two years, which gives you one-year of data, which generally tells you anything.
Well, you can say, yeah, you can say.
Well, I can say even in, in whatever number, three years, four years, five years, that we will revisit this and see if we want to reinstate the five-year lottery. Let's say it's going to stay in place, or we'll do it for a year or two, it, we're going to have no information on which to really further a decision. It needs to be a longer period of time. And the only way to get that data is to shut it down as they expire and collect the, the usage data and the complaint data and so forth and see if, if that was effective, not effective, if it caused unintended consequences. But I'm just not at all happy with accepting what's been presented to us there.
Well, they, they, that's a recommendation on two years as well, you know, the timeframe.
Well, I agree with Mike because when I read it, I, I was really confused because I thought, well, this is basically what we've always had, so why are we, I mean, that, that wasn't what we were looking at to change.
Yeah.
So, I was real confused about the, that section as well. So, I think, I think what we need to be looking at is what the recommendation was from the planning commission and go from there.
So, I'm, I'm happy with that. So, I, I think we're taking questions right now, correct, still, and then we'll go into public hearing, right?
And I, I had a, Mike, can you do that? I had a question on the 14-day, the language under section B, 14-day monthly, monthly limited permit occupancy requirements. The words, it says the, an individual tenancy shall commence on the first day that the person that constitutes the individual tenancy occupy, are, or are entitled to occupy the dwelling unit. And I guess my question is, I don't know how easy it would be for property managers or anybody else managing that property to count the days if it wasn't, if it didn't begin on the day that they are entitled to occupy, because you could have a day that they're entitled to occupy and they don't come in until the second or third day. And if the property manager doesn't know that or has made reservations for subsequent stay with somebody else and has already counted those days, then would they be out of sync?
Are you referring to the monthly limited?
Uh, yeah.
Because my understanding is that you, or they recommend to not do the monthly limited and.
Well, but you have, on the, you have it marked out in yellow, the words "or are entitled to occupy." So, it basically, it says the, the day that the individual tenancy occupies the dwelling unit. So, instead of entitled to occupy, it's occupy. And I guess I'm just concerned that, that the count gets off, then if we're going to keep that 14-day, you know, limit.
Window.
Yeah. And I don't know, maybe Brian or somebody could tell us whether that would be a problem for them or not, but that's.
We base all those reservations based on that first, like in the summer. February first week it's booked, and then it's booked week on, week off, week on, week off. People have family emergencies and they were supposed to arrive on Saturday, and unfortunately they don't arrive on, so Sunday, we still count that week as that arrival on Saturday.
But what about winter? I know you said, summer was a lot easier to count, but, but when it comes to winter and off-season, that it gets, it gets real crazy.
It gets a lot harder, it's, because you have to go, go ahead.
It gets very complicated.
So, if somebody is occupying instead of, instead of entitled to occupy, then does that throw your count off?
It, it would because the ordinance says it has to be on the first day of arrival. So, if somebody came in like on Friday the 15th and they were there for three nights, you would block it up until the Friday, two weeks from there. But you have to block in front of it, literally almost two weeks, whatever the minimum would be. If it was two days, you'd go back to the Friday and then move it over to Sunday so that somebody hopefully could take that weekend. But you're looking at about 24 days of blocking for a 14-day.
And it looks like the proposal is to take out that, that, those, that word, those words "or are entitled to occupy," which to me means that somebody could come in and say, well, I'm occupying now. And then, again, your count is to be based on.
Yeah, if you're going to say that, then, then it almost, would that, does not matter what day somebody actually came in, then the count wouldn't start from that day?
That's the question I have.
That, yeah, I'm, I've lost it because that's maybe been doing it from the day of arrival.
Yeah, from the day of arrival, yeah.
Not, not from the day it was reserved, but the day they arrived.
Well, the day they, they reserved their arrival date. So, if they reserved six months ago, they come in on Friday the 15th, that's the day it starts.
So, that's the day they were entitled to.
Right.
That's trying to clarify.
Yeah.
Right, that's, yes, the day they were entitled to.
Not the day they occupied.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, because they're still going to pay if they don't show up until Sunday. They're still going to check in at the same time because somebody else is checking in. So, wouldn't matter, like, it's like, you, you're checking in on Friday, you had a little something, something, you're not going to get here until Sunday. You were checking out to next Friday, you're still checking out next Friday.
So, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect your count then, okay.
They still, and they still have to pay instead of still get to collect taxes for the two days they weren't even leaving there.
So, we shouldn't have this crossed out.
No, it should, entitled.
Yes, it doesn't necessarily mean anything.
Yeah, entitled should be in there.
Okay, I think that was a good segue to let's have some public hearing, and we can come back to discussion after that. Elaine, do you want to start?
Oh, sure. Elaine Higuer, P.O. Box 474. So, obviously, I am somewhat involved in the short-term rental rules. My husband and I own a real estate company here. So, we are continually explaining the rules to a degree to our clients, and then certainly having them contact our professionals and our city to verify that. What I can say is, we work in a lot of communities out here, and every community has very different rules about how they handle short-term rentals. I will tell you that from my knowledge, truly, the way Cannon Beach does, does it, even with our very minimal nightly permits, we have a total of, I don't know, 92 or 98 of those. They are minimal compared to other cities who, once you have a permit there, you're golden. Manzanita, they allow 17% of their homes in various zones, which really is most of the city, to have a short-term rental permit at one time. There's an entire section of Manzanita that doesn't even fall under that cap, that can have a rental permit because it's in the urban growth boundary of Manzanita, so it falls under a different rule. So, I understand that this is always a hot-button issue in our town, much like parking and, and all of that. But I would really ask you to not make any changes to the five-year permit at this time. I'm pretty curious about what data you're all looking to collect. And it certainly seems to me that the data should be collected under the current rules that we have, not under the guise of, you know, changing our rules kind of, sorta to collect data. That seems like it would skew the data. I do think that it's an awesome idea to have a committee. Let homeowners and business owners and short-term rental, let us form a committee to really look at it and see if we can't bring forward some ideas that can collectively make things better. I live on a street in Cannon Beach. I am, I think there are two full-time residents on there. I have both 14-day rentals. I have both 14-day rentals and I have nightly rentals on my street. And I will tell you, the visitors are extraordinarily sweet. They're very nice, they are never rude or out of hand. On an occasion, they forget to turn off an outside light, which shines in my bedroom. The next day, I either call the rental company, who's super great, they have notes in the house, or I walk over and I introduce myself and I welcome them and tell them, I hope they're having a great time and enjoying our city, and would you please remember? And they always then turn it off. So I don't find that I have the same issue as Lisa. If she has visitors that are out of control. My other house that I used to live in, there are unregulated rentals. Even those weren't a hassle. I would tell you, when the owners are there, those are really the people who have a little regard for us because they're partying. It's their home, they have a billion of their friends. But our visitors who stay in these homes, I think, are extremely respectful of us as neighbors. I'm sure every once in a while, somebody's a little bit of a poop. But I, I think that if you change it willy-nilly, it, it is a mistake without really allowing some citizen input to make it so you only have to do it once and there's not a huge uproar. So, thank you so much.
Jan Seibert-Worman, P.O., Box 778. I just wanted to encourage you to follow the Planning Commission's recommendations that no new five-year rentals be for two years, possibly three, if you need more time to gather data. I've lived here 30 years, I've seen the changes that these, basically hotels in residential neighborhoods, the changes they've made. I've talked to a lot of people, especially in the Tolavana area, who have literally been deluged and feel like they're living in a commercial zone. So I really ask you to please follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission, and thank you very much.
Lisa Kerr, Post Office, Box 94, Cannon Beach, Oregon. And no one's asking for willy-nilly changes whatsoever. The data would still be the same, collecting data. There still will be five-year rentals, just no new ones. But there still will be plenty of them from which to collect enough data to make a decision. The two-year period was not etched in stone. It was sort of picked out of the error, kind of. If, if, if the council thinks that more time is needed to get data that is relevant or makes any sense, of course, it would make sense to do so. But there is nothing willy-nilly about the changes that were proposed by the Planning Commission.
Anybody else? Brian or TJ, do you have any added comments?
I just, I still would like to see the council form a committee and have a mix of presidents, managers, people who are RBO. I think there's some real, real things that we can make some definite changes that would be beneficial for the community, the community. I've been here all my life, so I've seen the changes come and go and, and see. But I'd, I'd love to work with it. I'm all about making this community livable. And we do care about it and the power of it.
Okay, thank you. That will close the public hearing. And we'll go back to some deliberation, figure out what to do. I'm kind of in a muddle. I don't really want to, I'm kind of in, agree with Mike. I don't think we should proceed with voting on this in any form currently. For some reason, I'm just, again, in a muddle. I think I want to address what TJ was asking a little bit. The fact that I think, as the City Council, the guidelines within the comprehensive plan are the reasoning behind this. The balance, it's stated in the, in the comprehensive, the balance of commercial and residential, and that's our job. And we've got to maintain that balance, which is really tricky. And this is part of that. Like to try and figure out how to get it right. I hate to say I've done this several times before, both on Planning Commission and Council, so... And on top of that, being the fact that Cannon Beach literally established a control of short-term rental before anybody else in the state had. Ours is one that is unique in the fact that we've constantly kind of tweaked it, trying to get it right. And whether we are going to get it right this time, I doubt it. But we're still trying. So in that, I'll pass it on to the rest of the council and see how they feel they might want to proceed and which direction to go.
I'd like to follow on your comments about the comprehensive plan. It's actually stated in the beginning of the ordinance itself. It says that whereas the Cannon Beach Comprehensive Plan directs the city to continue to balance between residential and resort elements of the community, which you referred to, by managing the resort aspects in a manner that is not disruptive to the residential character of the community. And whereas Cannon Beach Comprehensive Plan finding transient occupancy of dwelling units constitutes a visit or oriented commercial use in the city's residential areas. In order to maintain the residential character and livability of its neighborhoods, prevent the adverse effects of the transient occupancy of dwelling units on residential neighborhoods, it is necessary to limit and regulate the transient occupancy of dwelling units. I have yet to hear anybody say why we need nightly rentals in our residential neighborhood, which is akin to being a motel, operating, commercial rental property in our residential neighborhood. I've heard nobody justify that in any of the arguments over the last several years. So that's why I feel that we should stick with the, the ordinance as originally drafted to phase out the five-year nightly rentals. They can be replaced with 14-day rentals. And you've heard testimony saying that 14-day rental in this, in the summer is full occupancy anyway. So I don't know why it has to be justification is to have, number one, a lottery. What's that about? And why should it be a nightly rental permit in a residential neighborhood? Sure, somebody may come in and stay two nights, but it means it rents again right away. But it's 14-day rental, there's a low respect for the neighbors until it gets rented again. I guess those are my comments.
Yes?
Yes, I'd, I'd ask the council, it, as it's been presented, if there's any interest in the formation of a committee to, to look into this. And I believe we discussed it at the work session, in the affirmative, correct?
Naturally, Bruce is right of the room during that comment, so.
Yeah, it's my understanding that, yes, that neck, that'd be on next month's agenda is to appoint those members or, or form that committee.
Do we have a, kind of a guideline of how big and how often and any of that set up yet?
We currently have, like I said, a working group of mainly short-term rental professionals. So we would have some selection from there and others. They meet, we meet, try to meet kind of roughly quarterly. But Bruce, they're asking about the committee, formation of a committee. And so I would think that that's one, at least one third or one quarter of the group would be made from that. Then we would have normal residents and put out the request for that.
I would recommend that if you're going to form a committee, you spend some time trying to figure out what the appropriate makeup is as far as your ratios. There's two opportunities coming up. One is a week from tonight. It's a relatively full meeting. We won't have a whole lot of time to do research or prepare materials. If you have any requests, that's a possibility. And then we have a workshop on September 10th, which is before your marathon or forum. But that meeting is relatively late at this point. Okay. So that's, those are the meetings that you could probably do it. And then potentially October, if there was any follow-up. So I think that whether or not we do it in August or September depends on what you're asking from staff. If you just want to think about what the appropriate setup would be, then we can just put it on as a discussion item in August. That agenda is actionable.
But that's a very full agenda for the following.
It's, it's pretty full. It's not, um, depending on how far we want to go into discussions. But there's, we've, since this has been sent out to you, we have taken a couple items off.
Well, I think we ought to allow sufficient time to meet the discussion and allow staff time to put together a recommendation somewhat based on experience because we've been doing it already for the council to discuss and set out the objective of that committee. There's not a urgency to do it. I mean, it's not like you've got to do it this next month or the following month. But take time to identify what it is, the recommended makeup. Give that back to the council for approval and then the other members for it. I guess I'd be looking at the, make sure enough time, not try to, yeah, September.
Jeff, are you good with September on that, September 10th?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, if you'd be...
Form the committee.
So you want recommendations on who should be on the committee? You want the relative numbers of different groups? And then also a specific charge? I think that's what you were talking about, Elaine?
Okay.
And we will, we will do our best based on the comments.
When it comes to the public, though, that would be involved in that committee, should we be requesting that people that are interested let us know? Because I think if you put a group together, that might not include people that actually might need to be convinced that this is...
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that, yeah, I wouldn't do that.
It's just the type of, type of presentation, which you're talking about, yeah.
For example, industry and residents.
Yes.
Is there someone else, another group that...
I think businesses might, might want to, I don't know.
You have part-time, full-time residents. There's a lot of different groups.
But I think it should be balanced.
Or this, and that's going to be the trick, is coming up with a balance. And then when you agree on a balance, then it a lot depends on who you appoint as far as continuing the balance.
And I think also, everybody should understand that this is a limited committee, not one that's going to run forever and ever. We're going to set a timeline and establish a goal.
A limited charge.
Right.
Okay, so we will come up with the recommendation on the makeup of the committee and the charge, the charge.
May I jump in? I think a Realtor should be selected.
Oh, sure.
Well, you talked about business and that, they're knee-deep in it. So I think it'd be nice to see somebody who needs to work within that.
Okay, unless there's an objection to that, we will include a Realtor.
Well, we're so full-time residents, most, most of the local Realtors, we, so we are, we're both, you know, we're business owners and we're homeowners.
Right. And that's one of the discussions that, do you want people to only have one hat or double hat, you know? That'll be all hard for discussion by then. That's a good point.
Okay.
And that'll go to September 10th.
So that means we'll have this back to us in a, in a warrant to look at?
At some point, yes.
Okay. We don't know yet.
As soon as they argue, well, we'll get it back.
Okay.
So are we talking ordinance now?
Yeah, that's what I asked.
Yeah, I wasn't.
We could still, we could still consider the ordinance.
Yeah, no.
We can talk about the committee still?
Committee, right. Just committee.
And that depends on the objective of the committee. If they come back with an ordinance, or if we want them to come back with an ordinance, we'll figure that out. I don't know if that's the direction where I want to give them right away. But it will lead eventually to where we are right now, looking at an ordinance. But not right...
Right now, you're stopping your discussion on the ordinance.
We're stopping discussion on this one.
Or you're committed to review it.
Correct.
Okay, make recommendations.
Okay. Everybody understand?
Well, okay, the, I guess my question is then, what was the point of the Planning Commission looking at it and us looking at it? And now all of a sudden, we're going to delay it because a committee is going to come up with maybe some other suggestions that we should consider? I don't know that the ordinance has to be delayed just because the committee is... I, I would imagine that the committee is going to be discussing other, other aspects of short-term rentals that they may want to make recommendations on. It doesn't necessarily mean they're going to make recommendations on the ordinance.
I saw these as two separate things. I didn't see this as being prior to ruling on the ordinance. This is just something we thought was a good idea all along, with whatever ordinance we have in place, to address the ongoing, it's been going on a long time, ongoing issues that may or may not arise and recommendations for solving these things. And maybe everything, you may even get into, I keep hearing these complaints about the second homeowners. Everybody's saying it's like the short-term rentals, but it may be, it's more than that. But I'd say this committee, when they get their charge, I don't know if you put a sunset on it, at least not too short, because if they get into that, it's going to be, I think, valuable in addressing what we're trying to address now. There's never been anybody focused on that. And they could evaluate the results of this ordinance, if it's in the next year and four years, they could be around for a long time. And at the same time, addressing other issues that come up with short-term rentals, conflicts with residents, conflicts with parking. There's a lot of issues, I think, this committee, if we comprise it properly, can be, at least, if not ongoing forever, at least a long term, to help us address a lot of issues with the influx of visitors that we have that are coming just for short time. I don't see holding off on the ordinance. I think a committee's a good thing regardless of what we do with it.
Jeff, are you clear on what ordinance is being considered?
I, I, I was under the same assumption as Councilman Benefield there, that I, I thought they were talking, they had gone into the sidebar to talk about the committee and had not said, let's hold off on this ordinance as before them tonight. So, so that, I got lost in that little discussion. And, but I do want to bring it back to that because I, I really think if you guys do decide to take that step of tabling, I would recommend highly, just table the five-year if you're going to table one thing. Because the other stuff, you guys, I, I have not heard a disagreement in, in where the direction's going there. And at least we can, if we accomplish even the technical changes that have been discussed, I think it's a, it's worth doing the ordinance. Plus those others that you've tentatively kind of talked about, so.
Okay, that was my bet. I just assumed that if we're going to ask a committee to make changes, why make changes twice?
Yeah.
Why not? Hey, Brad, from the committee, do you give us advice in terms of different constituencies of homeowners, residents, and part-time, and all the same? As they address the ordinance that we have or the ones that we've put in place and ongoing. My view of it, not just somebody to address data gathering on whether or not to buy your plan.
Okay, so if I understand it, you're going to take up ordinance 1905 tonight, but there may be consideration for the language that Jeff can go through as far as removing the discussion about the five-year, but the rest of it is acceptable?
I'm not sure even why we have to remove the five-year. I mean, if we decide, if the committee decides to make a recommendation on the five-year, we can always revisit that.
Right. For some reason, I thought that I heard that.
You did, you heard Jeff.
Let's take it out.
Jeff, you heard Jeff.
Yeah, okay. So can you leave it as-is?
Leave it as, well, when you say as-is, I leave it as-is, the draft ordinance that was submitted to the planning commission.
Okay, but that's not, that's not the problem?
Well, and I don't know why we have something in front of us that we've never asked for.
Well, again, this was, went to the planning commission, planning commission did make recommendations for you, that's what came back. We can, but I don't think that we can have you vote on the original thing you sent because it's not coming here tonight. We probably need to re-advertise that, wouldn't we, Jeff?
You don't have to re-advertise, because all they're doing is making a rec, the planning commission, all they did was make a recommendation on the ordinance. So they, you, all they have to do is amend. If they, if they vote to amend it to whatever version they choose, they can do that. There, you do not have to re-notice that.
So we could take that original document and amend it to leave the 14-day rental language there, delete the twice-a-month language.
Yeah, the monthly, the monthly is, are you, are you talking about the monthly and the 14-day? That is how it currently.
No, let me, let me step in here. We have, we have the 1905 in front of us. If you want to amend 1905, we can do that. If you want to amend something else, you can't do that. So if you can figure out how to amend 1905 to fit what you're asking, Mike, we can do that, but I would rather it come back as a different ordinance.
Yes, but, yes, to see again. That's what you're recommending.
Right.
Yeah, you'd just like to see whatever we come up with tonight, bring it back to you one more time. And, and I, I think that that's the advisable thing to do, because it seems to me, because I'm still trying to understand what Mike's discussing, because I didn't think the 14-day and the monthly was discussed as a change. I thought that you were happy with keeping the 14-day as-is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the five-year that we were.
Yes, the five-year is the issue.
And you found some other language that you had issues with? Is that correct?
The other language, I just didn't.
Didn't understand.
Drops out.
Yeah.
I didn't understand it.
Okay. So, so the only thing that I think that would be edited or, you know, brought back before you is the five-year language. And so you would prefer seeing it in the, as you guys had presented to the planning commission with the five-year.
Was it dropping out?
Dropping out, mm-hmm, yeah.
That means 1905 is going to just not float right now. You'll have to come back with another. Work with Mike to get the language straight.
Yeah, I can get that back before you next month.
Okay? So that's where we're at. We're going to let this one float a little bit and come back again. So those who are willing, come back later.
Two items on, on September 10th.
Okay.
Okay.
That ends the ordinances. We'll go to action item. Next item, consideration of parks and community services, community grant recommendations for this year. Bruce?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have a copy of the recommendations for grant awards that came from Parks and Community Services Committee. You did increase the funding from the general fund to $90,000 this year. That is the total of the recommendations that are, that are made, and they are listed on a June 20th memo from Parks and Community Services Committee. There's one additional item that came up during that discussion, and that is item four, which we'll take up after. Governor Bruce Banson.
Okay, so any discussion or an appropriate motion, please?
I had a question, if anyone else?
Please.
Number 12, the Sea Turtles Forever, does anybody remember a conversation we had in the budget meetings about increasing their, their allotment this year?
Yes, sir. It was actually, because they got $7,000 last year, there was $7,000 in the budget this year. I believe that the budget committee's direction was if you removed that $7,000, and then they would rely on whatever grant they were able to receive from the Parks Community Services Group. And so the amount that they will have available is $2144.
Okay. Does anyone on the council wish to amend their amount given to them? It appears they've asked for $2,500 and received almost as much.
Yeah. I think that's a fair, personally.
I, I do, too. I was approached by Ed Johnson, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure what, what he was asking for, but I, I said I would find out what.
Do you think he was asking for $7,000?
I'm sure he was hopeful of that, but I don't understand.
Because that's not what he asked?
If they asked for $2,500 and received almost as much, I would say that's what they needed.
The timing of what happened is that the budget matched what was put in last year. That was there. And then the timeframe for this came up, and they asked for $2,500. Well, this was still in the budget, the $7,000, and then we made the decision to take that out. And so what they ended up out of the $2,500 is the $2144. But there was, there was kind of a, two things going on at once. And so they thought there was money in the budget.
So, if, if that's the case, I, I feel it's somewhat disingenuous to have promised them some money and then taken it away.
We didn't promise.
Yeah, if I can, I was the one that put in, I was very careful when I talked to Ed.
Okay.
I said, Ed, last year, the money was there, it's in again, there's no guarantees, it's got to go to the budget committee.
Mm-hmm.
And he understood that. And after the decision was made, I called him and said, Ed, they decided to take it out, so we talked about.
Okay.
But I think that that was already in when $2,500 was requested. So, but there was no promise or guarantees that that, those funds would show up. As a matter of fact, I was very careful in the conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Bruce.
We approved the numbers already.
This is the motion to approve the grants to be delivered as presented.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2019 through '20 community grant awards as presented.
Second.
Whoa.
You've got to double second.
Last comments? Jill, play the role.
Council President Benefield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Staidell?
Yes. Okay. Before I, I'm going to take a little interlude here just for a second, I'd like to welcome and thank fellow Counselor Tita. Counselor Tita from Seaside, just to, because she doesn't have enough meetings to go to, she comes to ours. So, just wanted to recognize her. Next item, consideration upgrade of the electrical at City Hall Park Bandstand, City Park Bandstand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, these conversations were going on regarding the grant funds from Parks and Community Services. There was another discussion, let me see, make sure I got my right. No, this, I'm sorry, this was TAC, this was not the Parks Committee. But when they went through their process, there was discussion about another $20,000 that would come from the TAC funds that would be applied to making electrical improvements at the bandstand. At the time, the estimate was $20,000 for those improvements. There was not a request made by a 501(c)(3), which is required under the charter. We talked about the possibility of, the council, if, if it went to Parks and Parks reviewed it, because it's a park function, and then, then we would make a recommendation or make it possible for resolution to transfer the funds from the general fund. After this developed, it turns out that the costs are probably going to be under $10,000. And so rather than take anything, start the precedent of taking something from the general fund reserve, we are going to take the funds from the Parks Department with the caveat that we will work to make it work. But if it doesn't, and something comes up, we may be coming to you and asking for some sort of an adjustment to the Parks budget by the end of the year. We don't anticipate it, but it is possible, and that stops us from trying to do a resolution. So what that means is tonight, because you had agreed with, you know, conceptually, we talked about it with the Parks Committee, they were in favor of it, the only direction that I'm asking for from you tonight is, do you want to proceed now that it's $10,000 and the funds would come from existing Parks?
I do.
Just consensus is fine.
Yes.
Okay, then we will do that, and, and thank you for your direction.
Wow, that's an easy one. Next item, consideration of contractual agreement between Sunset Empire Transportation District and the city. Bruce?
This is an agreement that we have ongoing with the Sunset Empire Transportation District. They did do a presentation to you at a recent workshop. You had agreed with what had been presented. I do want to call out that there was one minor change in, on Exhibit A, and that has to do with the non-summer weekend schedule. That, that title was changed to appropriately call it the non-summer weekend schedule, it was titled something else. But in, in practice, we were only paying for the weekends in the non-summer months, but that's not the way it was titled. We contacted them, and they did agree to make that change. So that is closer to the actual practice. That's the only change we recommend approval?
Well, I have a couple of editorial comments here.
That would be shocked if you did.
The number 12, under audit requirements, the word "its" should be "ITS" and not apostrophe S. A couple places. And I think there's one other in there.
That was in section?
That's the number.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Okay, and, I just like to, oops, I like to do this to bug you.
I know. It's always a pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
I know.
And I didn't write this off.
Well, there's another one I'll, oh, oh.
I don't feel bad, because I didn't write it.
There's another one I'll email you.
Okay, so then, if we make it as, if there's a motion to make it as amended, we'll make those changes.
Actually, I see it now.
What is it?
Number 17.
Yep.
Contractor personnel, lowercase b, Americans, apostrophe S should be Americans without the apostrophe. Down below.
Okay, with disabilities.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. With those two changed.
Oh, wait a minute, I'll find another one. Number 18.
This is my line.
Number 18.
Yes.
SETD's own cost and expense insurer, each person should be insurer, E-N-S-U-R-E.
Okay.
All right, I'll shut up now.
Oh, please don't.
[laughing].
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. I need a motion then.
I move that we approve the contract between the Sunset Empire Transportation District and the city of Cannon Beach.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Okay, any last discussion? Jill, call the role.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benefield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Staidell?
Yes. Okay, we did all the hard stuff. Now we're going to the fun stuff. Updates and discussions, Cannon Beach Medical Reserve Corps supplies. Jason and Lila.
Yes. I don't know if any of you know Lila Wickham.
How?
She did a wonderful job for our city. And I'm going to turn it over to her, because she's worked with a dark group on this one and got some supplies for them.
So, thank you. It's Lila Wickham, PO Box 208, Tolawanna Park, 97145. Bob went to take his horses to bed, so he had to leave. But we did get some pet supplies, and I wanted to fold it into a whole discussion about all of the medical supplies. And I don't know if you got the spreadsheet from Colleen?
We do.
Okay.
It's in front of me.
Okay, so overall, we've actually gotten $44,831 in medical and pet supplies. We got a brand-new, we got a brand-new approval that you see attached as, I better go in the order of the things you've got, or you'll get mixed up. So the, the pet supplies actually came from the state of Oregon, from the, from the Oregon Health Authority. And that's because we've been whining about pet supplies all this time. And then the, the second thing that you have, and all of those documents are really about that little mini-grant of the pet supplies that only is $2,320. But then if you scroll past all that, we just learned that we are acquiring 20 radios and a receiver for the Medical Reserve Corps communications. And you'll see a memo from Catherine Richer that describes those radios, it's not the specs of the radios, but describes the radios and their operability. And we actually tested it, and the contractor put it up at the very top of Sunset, and we were able to hear all the way up and down the city and from the beach to the, we had three people working it. So I think it's going to do a lot to improve our ability to communicate with the Medical Reserve Corps folks. We don't own those radios. They're being, they're still the property of the state of Oregon, but they won't want them back, it'll be fine. And then if you look at the, there were a bunch of maps, and the portable radio kit is on the third page of that document, and it shows you the radio kit, the 20 radios. It doesn't do a good job of showing you the, the receiver, but it's tall, and it has two big batteries, and it has a solar power. And then, just to fold it all, sorry, all into perspective, the thing that I say, see that Brendan has with the, the spreadsheet there?
Mm-hmm. All of the spreadsheet.
So those are all of the supplies that we've gotten from various sources, from the hospital preparedness funding, and from, some from Columbia Memorial and some from Providence Seaside. And there, you can see they're categorized, our last supply grouping before the pets was pediatrics. And so the, the things, you can see what's in the barrels, you can see what's in the boxes, you can see, you know, what we have at each cash site. Any questions?
Thank you.
I know Lila won't toot her own horn, but she's done an amazing job.
Wow, wow, yes.
We actually, we're going to have more pediatric supplies, but when we got the first set of diapers in and tried to stuff them into the barrels, even though we used the shrink-a-dink stuff so that, to pull the air out, we realized we would have, that those cash sites, it would just be filled with diapers. So we, we rolled back on that. So that's really it, and we're just, keep on identifying our priorities and, and seeking funds for them, so there could be a lot of people here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
No motion required, okay. Emergency management update, Rick?
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to take an opportunity to talk to everybody and let you know how I got into the service of Cannon Beach. I've had a lot of people approach me. I've had a lot of people approach me lately and want to know what we're doing, and how did I get here, and all those other good questions. So I'd like to start off by saying, if I can just keep up with Lila, I will probably survive. But that's another story. A little bit of background on myself, my wife happily dragged me here many years ago. She's a native Oregonian, and her family's been here since 1986. She advised me several years ago that we were going to retire here, and we purchased a house here five years ago. When my son decided to go to college here in Oregon, it kind of set the table for us to come to Cannon Beach earlier, and so two years ago, we moved up here full-time. And I started commuting back to Sacramento. With that being said, a little bit about myself, is I have 32 years' experience in emergency services. I've worked for four fire departments and two ambulance companies. The last 25 years, I've been a firefighter with Sacramento Fire Department, and I currently hold a rank, Fire Battalion Chief, and I'm a paramedic. With that being said, I also have, I've had the opportunity to build a lot of systems and teams in that fire department out of the need that they've had. And the past several years, we've been able to use those small teams and large concepts to our advantage, and it's been very, very good. We've seen a lot of results with it. I hold a bachelor's degree in emergency management, and I also have a executive fire officer certificate from National Fire Academy, which is in Emmsburg, Maryland, where FEMA is headquartered. That four-year program focuses on community risk reduction, establishing community resiliency, executive leadership, and managing major disasters. Pretty intensive program, but if you ever get a chance to go back to National Fire Academy, I highly recommend it. It's a pretty amazing place. I was very proud of Cannon Beach when they decided to put more efforts into emergency management. When I first moved here, that was my number-one concern of, and anxiety of, how's this going to work out? When that position went unfilled, it was another little disconcerting moment, but when it did get filled, I was very excited for the city. And I actually contacted and knew the person who initially took that job, and I contacted the city manager and offered my assistance for the time when I was here in town. When that opportunity fell short of what it was realized, I got contacted by the city and had an opportunity to help out my community that we're in right now. I didn't turn it down, but I also didn't consider it of what it could turn into. As I work in this community and I dedicate, you know, a day a week to the city, I'm amazed by the amount of efforts that have already been taking place in emergency management. And realistically, what you guys have done by committing to it is really what it needs. It just hasn't had an opportunity to have a sustainable life and be part of the culture of this area. Plus, this area has changed so much, at least in the past decade for sure. The historic measures that have been in place here, it just, in order to make them a culture, you have to have somebody at the helm. And it's amazing how many volunteers and how many educated people are actually here in Cannon Beach as residents. So there's a lot of inputs that I've been receiving recently since I've been here, and it's been pretty fun, but it's been a lot to take in, but it's been great. I had an opportunity to do an entire 360 evaluation of the city and the county over the time that I've had to deal with it, and I provided that to you guys in an executive summary. What I really want to do is give an opportunity for you guys to ask questions of me on where we're going, how are we going to get there, or any other questions that you might have from me personally.
At this time?
Yeah.
Okay, great. A lot of these things that you've lined out, Rick, seem to have dollar figures that aren't attached to them.
Okay.
Are you willing to put dollar figures in front of some stuff so that we, as a council, sort of have an idea about how to move forward with this?
Yeah, and I'm happy to answer that. The good thing about the dollar figures that were already handed in a budget that I was placed with is there's hard costs and there's soft costs. The hard costs are building the infrastructure for the city, radios, vehicles, improving cash site locations, those are hard costs. And those are things that can be given to you guys and provided to you guys fairly easy with the research, as we uncover the research. Some of the things that were put into the budget, we're putting there as a stakeholder as, these are what we need, we don't know what it looks like yet. But coming from a major city, you have to be extremely careful about how you buy purchases, especially for emergency services. If you don't do your research on them, you can really make a blunder with purchasing things that won't work. So I do believe there'll be some research that needs to be undergoing with water filtration systems and how we move water, maybe some equipment that we have that is, everything that we buy for emergency services, honestly, really needs to be multi-use to where Public Works has to be able to use it with the water teams and the road teams. It cannot just sit idle for emergency services. That's a waste of taxpayer dollars. So the research that we put into some of these things to back up, to dump big money into infrastructure for emergency management is very important. So for me, just to arbitrarily throw money out there would be a little bit irresponsible, but once you build the infrastructure with the hard costs, the soft costs are basically training the members that are out here in the audience right now. The CERT team members, the MRC, and building the resilience of the community, those are soft cost numbers. Those are not that expensive, but those take a lot of time. So when you're buying maybe 50 go-bags, and then your go-bag purchases go into business purchases for their go-bags and their concepts, that's going to be kind of a big number, but overall, those numbers are really critical. So when you break everything down to hard and soft costs, you really need to have a budget that's sustainable for about three years to build a program like this. After that, those hard costs go down. They do. This becomes a maintenance program that just has to be maintained, and the culture has to be brought into it. So it's, as much as you don't want to sit here in a public safety sector and say, eventually you're going to have to cut this budget, eventually you can cut this budget, but you have to commit to the hard costs being built into the infrastructure. Conax boxes, cash site locations, vehicles to move and transport items and goods, food, water, shelter, there's some of those things that are going to be purchased upfront, but you don't have to do those ongoing. So to add those to the picture right now, I've only had 13 days in this position. I can't quite give it to you yet, but I will be happy to do it.
I appreciate that, Rick.
I mean, I might be able to help you here. The council did put in some placeholders for radios. There was also some money for equipment, vehicles, that sort of thing, and we said, well, let's just go ahead and put that into the communications side. We're making steps to try to go ahead and address the communications. We think from a radio standpoint, there's enough there, but you all are aware of our effort to try to put in a tower for additional antennas for KNU and ourselves. So that, that's not covered, but as far as like being able to address staff and those kind of things, I think we've got it. Eventually, we will be making decisions on the cash site. So we know that it's likely there will be some changes. There might be additional, there might be improvements to them. Until we actually decide how we're going to make everything work, we won't be able to go ahead and give those, but I would anticipate that that'll be in the budget discussion next year. And then the same thing with vehicles, there's some things that they will probably be like third-tier purchases, but if we have a major event that requires a lot of cleanup, that sort of thing, we have people that can operate the equipment, but we don't have enough equipment. So we would probably try to acquire some of those through surplus or something. And again, this is equipment that would be usable by Public Works for projects and things. So, but that's probably like the third, you know, going out, as Rick was talking about, a three-year program. So this year, we're dealing with communications, that sort of thing, making decisions about cash sites and equipment, and that'll be, you know, for the following year. But when we gave the budget this year, we were saying, this is like the order of magnitude of what it's going to take for a couple of years, and we're hoping to be able to repeat that.
Okay.
Maintain that. Thanks, Rick. I'm sorry.
I don't really have any questions, but I will make a comment that I have been involved with the EMT, the Emergency Management Team, which is all of the assets that we have that we're focusing on emergency management. And Rick is doing a roundtable, and we all are apprising ourselves of what we are doing. So it's working very well. Robert?
One of the items that you brought up is that the Cannon Beach Fire Department needs to work side-by-side with the city of Cannon Beach. Have you been able to start working on that a little bit?
Yeah. The chief and the, and the paid professionals that are there right now with the recruitment officer, we've been working together a little bit more than we have in the past. That chief officer, he hasn't been in there for a little bit while, so it's been challenging for the fire department to get their feet underneath them. I think years ago, when the CERT program and the other volunteers were underneath the guise of the fire department, and they were kind of removed, now it's kind of up to the city to pick up that chalice, and we're doing that. I think once we get up to speed, that'll be an easy segue for us to start working together more with the fire department. It's not a matter of want, it's just a matter of need. They don't have a need to do it, and they're just working on their own infrastructure, and they're struggling. And I definitely think I can bridge the gap with them, and I do believe it'll improve.
Your experience should help too.
I think so. I think, I think just giving them some perspective and some support in that area, whether it's communications or even just manpower and staffing, and then just overall recruiting of the CERT team members brings more people to the community, and then they start discovering the fire department as a volunteer organization, and that should improve.
And they have a presence at the management team.
Yes. And we hadn't had them there for a while, so it's really good to start having that.
Yeah.
You say that the CERT team needs to have more experience, it's the least experienced. What kind of experience do you think you will be able to provide the CERT team, or will it be you or will it be another?
It will be me. The interesting thing about the CERT team is, I think they may have a lot of life experience and a lot of opportunity, but it's only a three-year-old program. If you compare it to other programs that are up on their feet, you look at places like Nahalen Bay, they, they're so large that they have like seven to eight full-time people that work in a nonprofit organization and manage a couple hundred people, and they're pretty efficient. That took their program three and a half years to get up and established. Working with Mary Beth, she's very energetic, and she's ready to go, but we need to bring some more support, as in putting on training, getting them equipped, giving them a purpose. One of the key, I think, to give in any kind of volunteer organization is, they have to know why they're there. And so you can't just develop a CERT team and leave it. You have to develop a CERT team, and then you have to hone their skills and give them hands-on drills, whether it's non-emergency or emergency, to where they have confidence that they can operate at that level. No doubt, since I've been had an opportunity to review the city, is that we are going to have to completely depend on the citizen corps as a response. So the effort that the city's putting into, into the CERT program and MRC and DART is so, we're very lucky. Very few communities have this many people that are interested in helping, and if we can put effort into them and give them the tools and the training, but also a purpose, then I think it's going to grow. The one thing that's interesting about the CERT is, on the county level, they're struggling, they're struggling at all levels. And I think once our CERT team gets up to a point where Nahalen Bay could be respected at that level, you'll see the county kind of grow into that as well, and you'll bring more members from Seaside and the other communities up there, and you'll have a county-wide CERT program that'll probably be pretty bolstered, but that's going to take a few years. What Shawna's doing at the fire department with her recruitment, and then what Puka's doing at that, even at that school level with recruiting high schoolers, that's going to get people into the CERT programs a lot earlier versus just residents that are retired and looking for something to do. We need to change the program, but you have to have that program have purpose. And it's very important that we take a crawl, walk, run approach with CERT. Why are you here? This is what we're going to do with you. This is how you're going to be effective in the community, and then give them the tools and support them to move forward. That's going to take some time. But all the, all the parts of the Legos are here to build the wall. We can do it. What we can't do is build the program and stop. That will ruin everything that we're working for. If you look at the, if you look at the past efforts that have done in emergency management here, they all are based on really good ideas that just didn't have enough traction to move forward. Even hiring a consultant for emergency management, there's no way those individuals on the outside can be fully successful as a consultant. There's no way. You have to be integrated in the city, and you have to be on an ongoing commitment for years in order to make it really work, to be a part of the culture. So you can't blame a consultant. She did her job. She did. She just didn't have an opportunity to succeed at a level that this community really wants, which is integrated. And by having a full-time emergency manager here for a while that works with CERT, which works with the fire department, which works the whole county, and considers the whole region part of the emergency process, then you have a chance to really, really kind of shine. And all the recipe, all the elements of the recipe are here to make the cake bake, as long as we commit to it. And we realize that it's going to be a heavy lift for about three years to build this program. It's going to cost a little bit of money. After that, we can get it onto a maintenance level and then monitor and make corrections. And the key to anything that we do is we have to test it. If you don't test it, you don't know if it works or doesn't work. And so that testing sometimes changes directions of your plans, your request for resources, and where you go with it. I've done that my whole career, and it doesn't always work, but it's a lot better than it was yesterday.
I think too that Rick is setting things up between him and Jason. We've not had a training session for CERT for quite a while. I think that's scheduled September. I think we have an exercise October. And then, but then at some point too, we have an exercise, you know, following that. So the things that he's talking about, they're putting in place, you know, to train and then exercise. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things they're moving in a good direction.
Okay.
And I'm, for one, very glad that Rick is here. He's high-energy, hard to keep up with, impossible to control, but still a good guy.
Still a good guy. This is a chance to, let me have it, let's hear what you got.
Well, communication review and test from north side of Cannon Beach August 5th through the 23rd, 2019. What does that mean?
Right now, currently, we don't really have a communications plan in this area. Public Works and the police and the fire department have their own communication systems. They're able to be monitored. The challenge is, there are blind spots in certain parts of the city. So we've been able to, and lucky enough, to have volunteers that are part of the HAM programs that are not only incredible in the state, but local people right here with us, and they're volunteering their time to do reviews of our region. And we're doing some testing right now to make sure that we can develop a communications program that is bomb-proof with second and third area opportunities. The goal with our communications plan is to make it simplified. We want to be able to put a hand in, a radio in the hand of all CERT members and have them be able to do local triage at their streets and be able to communicate with command and control here at City Hall or another designated command post, and have us communicate to CERT teams, police department, Public Works, the county, and the state. And if we can do that, then we have a chance to communicate and have all of our needs at least be identified and be able to function. I have a little saying that I have, if you don't have communications, you don't have command and control, and I truly believe that. And once we grab communications and we can really bolster it, then we have the ability to fix things at the house-to-house level. And that's really what has to be done here, is we have to get ourselves in the mindset of, not everything is a tsunami. You have a wind event, you have a hot day, seven in a row, people are in their homes, those things are major problems around here. And we have to not just plan for the tsunami, we have to plan for the events and the daily challenges that are going to happen here at the beach. And that all starts with communications and training.
Okay.
And then there's one other question. You talked about the business community not having any real substantial plans for themselves as business owners. How are you going to work with the businesses, do you think?
Great question. After we get our feet underneath us, dealing with how we're going to respond as a community, as the city, and then as the residents, then the key is how do we support the business owners? There's little things that we have to tell them and identify with them, and simply, we have to take the go-bag concept of how they communicate with their employees, how do they communicate with their patrons, and they got to have a plan of what to do. That's the first thing. How do they handle an emergency? Secondly is, how do you build resiliency in the businesses? Are their records electronic, or are they in a box? Get them out of the written form, get them into the, get them into the cloud, so they're not worried about the facility and losing their account receivables. We need them to walk away from that building if they have... receivables. We need them to walk away from that building if they have to. I don't want them going back, like I wouldn't want someone going back in a burning house for their pit, their family pictures. I don't want them going back for their accounts receivables. So, the first thing we do is, we get them electronic, we get them digital. Then we train them and their employees on how to deal with removing themselves from that, that business environment and get to a safe place. That'll create resiliency. Now, right now, those people do not have a plan. And so, if you have a major event that happens during business hours downtown, you're going to lose a lot of people down there, simply because they don't know, or they're waiting because no one told them what to do, or they're worried about losing their account receivables in their computer. I want to teach them and train them to how to fix that problem to where you can easily walk away, and you can come back and your business isn't going to suffer. It's not a secret of how to do that. The problem is, we just don't have that integrated into our community. And by using the, a lot of the business owners that even come up here to the offices here and do some simple training, and give them the tools, and then provide them with opportunity to get the go-bags and educate their own employees, I think we can do that fairly simply. It's just going to take time to build that program. I, I definitely believe in doing town hall meetings and giving an opportunity to educate people face-to-face in their living rooms and in their businesses, and talking to them. But you can't ask a consultant to do that. It has to be someone who's here all the time. And, and it's important. It's important that it works that way.
Speaking of somebody that's here all the time, you gotta be here all the time.
My plan was, was to retire, and I appreciate the question, at the end of 2021. So, for me personally, to be leaving a permanent job, I've been out for 25 years, and to leave a retirement early is not easy. So, the commitments that I need to be here at the beginning of the year are just what you guys are doing. And if I can get a commitment from the city to fund these programs and make emergency management happen, and you guys can commit to whoever's going to do that to be consistently here for a few years to build the program, I'll be your guy. If that can't happen, that's okay. We can figure that out, too. But in general, those are the things that I need to walk away from that, to be here. But no matter what, I'm here. If you would want to replace me tomorrow, I'll be happy to still help out. But in general, you guys are doing exactly what you need to make me stay here long-term, which is, stay the course. You know, make this a reality, make Cannon Beach one of the safest places to come to and live.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. That was...
Thank you.
Move on. Little Pompe stormwater ditch maintenance.
Yeah, I'd like, Karen's going to handle some, hand some materials out. We have, in order to maintain drainage systems, for example, in the downtown area, we have to have runoff areas, and you have to clear them periodically. And so, we do have some work that's coming up. It's going to be in the little Pompe area related to downtown drainage, and Karen is going to go, because there's no, we can't reach you.
Karen, can you come here?
Everyone's abeats of having a quiet voice.
Right here.
All right. What I gave you were some pictures and a map that kind of conveys the area that we're going to be working on. It's, it's that time where we need to address the maintenance of Little Pompe, and, which integrates with our tide gates that we've already done our maintenance on earlier this year. We have a maintenance permit that allows us to clean out some of the residue in the storm ditch. And by not doing that, puts the downtown at risk of flooding. And so, what you have in front of you that I provided are two pictures. One's from 2008, and the other is from 2019. And you'll see how tight the vegetation is. It's very overgrown. So, we need to cut some of the willows. We need to remove some of the invasive species like the purple loosestrife and the yellow flag iris. Those are two things that we definitely don't want in there. And so, that would be part of our maintenance, as well as removing the sediment in that storm ditch area. So, that would be a long spruce where the railing is. The equipment that we rent to do this would remain on the street in spruce, and it has a long arm that extends out and would be cleaning out the ditch area. There would be some work off of Second Street and that area as well. But the majority of what we would be doing is on spruce.
It goes behind the restrooms, too?
Correct.
Yeah, for a second, yes.
And so, the critical aspect here, and what I want to share with you is, our in-water work period is July 1st through September 15th. And we want to take advantage of, of the low-tide periods that we're experiencing this year, and capture that, the dry weather window, as we call it. But in doing that, we had to ask for an extension outside that traditional July 1 through September 15th window, and they have granted that to us. And so, we plan to complete the work between September 16th and the 27th. So, that'd be the window of time that we would do it. So, after Labor Day, obviously, and still be able to capture some of those low-tide periods. It makes the work easier. The whole removing the sediment in the ditch also supports fish passage, the ability for the fish to get through there. When the sediment is built up, what I call sludge, that doesn't happen. The fish cannot pass through there easily. So, it's, it's a twofold. It's maintenance, but it's also to promote fish habitat and to reduce the risk of the downtown flooding. And that is our single area that controls the downtown water flow.
Karen, last time, they used an Akuan's long arm and a reach, but that was before the sidewalk and the fence.
Correct.
Is this a different piece of equipment?
It will. It will let us get over that railing without the risk of damage to that railing.
Good.
And the reason for wanting to bring this to you is that this is maintenance that we need to do. There is going to be disruption to the existing vegetation, and also, we're trying to incorporate some exotic removal while we're doing this type of work. So, it's going to be disruption to the area. It will grow back, but we will have the proper elevations for the drainage, that sort of thing. So, there will be a change in the look, and it's just a matter of the material growing back.
What's the process for getting the loosestrife?
Um, to be honest with you, Mike, I don't know the exact, you know, handling of that. I can provide you with that information when I get it from the experts, so to speak.
That being contracted out.
Though, we will get support from that. It's our folks, plus, the gentleman that helps us with our tide gate maintenance has been extremely helpful, and not only helping us secure our permits to do this on a regular, routine basis, but also the handling of some of that vegetation and the invasive species in there.
Will this disrupt parking and traffic along Spruce?
The one lane will always be open. We will have to have flaggers, and just for safety, that one lane will be closed.
This is the end of September, isn't it?
Yes. And so, again, part of that timing is strategic for that purpose, but it will, it will cause that one lane to be closed.
And this is along Second Street, or along Spruce?
Spruce.
Is it going to affect the red-winged blackbird at all?
I'm sorry, say again, Robin.
Is it going to affect the red-winged blackbird at all? Because their nests and where they are is right in that area.
If they were out there when we're doing some work, I mean, obviously, I don't think they're going to hang around, but it's not, it won't disturb their habitat that would cause them to not want to return.
The other question I had was, it says that, subject to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Regulatory Program. What does that mean?
Correct. We have to go through the Corps of Engineers, because they're the ones that actually give us the permit that gives us our maintenance requirement. So, we have to contact them and let them know exactly what we're going to be doing, and they respond whether it fits within that parameters of the maintenance agreement that we have on file.
Because I got, we have the letters from the other groups, but that one isn't here.
Yeah. So, when we, when we submit this, yeah. So, they respond back saying, it fits within your maintenance window.
Okay. Any other concerns?
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks for making the topic to us, and I didn't get in.
Okay. Our last item for the evening is the fact that we've attached the City Hall discussion to every meeting.
Yeah, it wasn't actually every meeting, but we didn't cover it at the last workshop. I said, maybe we can get Lisa to start on it tonight.
Do you have anything you want to start with, or should we?
Well, sure. I went to a city manager's conference, and I think I put some of this in, into a memo to you, but Ashley had talked about the fact that when you get to a point that you're actually out talking to the public about a referral that's, that's upcoming, there's some real cautions to that. One is that you want to submit any materials that you're going to be proposing to the Secretary of State, because they want to keep things as neutral as it can be. Some of the examples that they gave was, there was one community that, part of what they wanted to show is, they had a very low alarm rate compared to others. To make it easy, they had their city in red, and then all the others in blue, so you could make an easy comparison. And the state said, no, you have to be blue also. There are things where, to make things clear, people wanted to say, and this is one where they actually fund their police department by a referral every five years, and if it doesn't pass, they don't have a police department. And so, they wanted to say, if it does pass, and it does, they put larger, larger font, bold, and then if it does not, they said, no, all the same font, those kind of things. And what happens is that, you have to submit those, and so, you submit it, and then in about two weeks, they'll tell you what they like, what they don't like, what you need to change. And then you submit the change, and then they may find something else, or they may like it or not. What we were told is, it's a month, two months, three months, in order to get through that. And we have like seven months before we have to turn in all our materials and everything. So, there is, you know, some time crunch on trying to go ahead and, and put things together, if we're going to continue to move towards the main referral. So... I'll be quiet for a little bit. Probably that's the one.
Okay. Any discussion on City Hall stuff?
We haven't had a discussion yet on the public, public hearings that we're going to have, or not. I don't really want to call them public hearings, kind of town, town hall information session.
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't had that discussion.
But that was kind of how this started, as to what process you want to use.
So, are we scheduled to have a discussion about how and when we want to do that? Right now?
Well, it's hardly, we, we knew it was going to be a process, and so, that's why it was put on tentatively in all the workshops.
I'd kind of like to see us at least, you know, hard-schedule a discussion about that. I don't want to do it tonight, but I would like to see us find some time in our schedule so that we can start doing that. Because after the fore-doom discussions, then we probably will go into the City Hall discussion. So, I'd kind of like to see, you know, when we're going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, first, the October work session you said was light, or was that the regular meeting? Or is it September 1? I'm trying to...
Right now, October work session is real light.
Okay.
But you're also scheduled for the August workshop, which is next week, and then you'll be scheduled for September.
What, next week? If we put it at the front of the agenda, maybe we'd be more willing to talk about it a little bit further. By now, I'm kind of worried. But I do want to talk about trying to pin that down, so we have an idea of where we're going, like you say, after the doomsday, and how we might want to proceed with it. And I would ask council to come with ideas on how to do it and what to call it. Are you comfortable with that one first?
Sure. No, we can, we can put something, we can also start putting maybe exhibits or something together so that you can consider them. For example, there should be, you know, graphics about each proposal. There can be a graphic on the program, as far as, you know, the spaces and the number of spaces, that sort of thing. I think I've mentioned that in the past, that I think one of the critical elements, if not the most critical element, is that the council needs to articulate, this is why we're doing this. And if we don't have a good reason for it, then everything else after that doesn't make sense to us. So, I've started putting together some information for that that may, you know, hopefully will be helpful. Something that, based on past experience, I would recommend that council consider having, I don't know if you want to call it a blue ribbon committee or something, but the size of the project and the cost of the project, I think were a surprise to all of us. What I, I don't think that we're alone in that. I've had a lot of conversations recently with Manzanita, and they're much smaller than us, and their building is almost the same size. And so, I mean, it's kind of like, well, they're operating out of an old gas station, we're operating out of an old lumber mill. That if, I think that it would be beneficial if somebody vets the work that's there. So, by looking at the program and saying, yes, you need all these spaces, yes, these are reasonable sizes for them, then that says that the size of the building we're talking about, somebody else has looked at it and said, yes, that makes sense, or it doesn't. If you're looking at the sites, that we kind of have pluses and minuses for the sites. That's how we look at it, see if they agree with those, or if they don't. I think, I think that that would be beneficial when you find yourself in a position that you're talking to the public about it, that it, it had been vetted. So, I think that that's something that if you're going to do, you should probably start relatively soon. When, when I'm talking about you going out and talking, my past life, I was the one that went out and met with everybody to say, this is what the project's about, you know, that sort of thing. In Oregon, managers are specifically precluded from doing that. As a matter of fact, if, if one of us does it, and we get in any kind of trouble, we are totally on our own, the city cannot defend us. So, anything that we put together will be a presentation that you would make, possibly a committee that you appoint, but staff can be involved up to a certain point. And that's why I'm glad Ash is going to be here next week when we have this conversation, so she can go ahead and touch on that. I think, too, it would be good from her discussion, as I understand it, there's a lot of things we can be doing as staff to help now, and putting things in front of you for your consideration, but that stops when we submit the ballot language. And so, you know, maybe now is the time to be thinking more about some of the, you know, exhibits, that kind of thing, the approach you want to take, all of that. So, not trying to get out of anything, but we will have to back out at a certain point, and so, getting things done, and I'm not sure on the timeline, because if we have to have everything approved by the Secretary of State by the time we submit the ballot language, then we're talking middle of February, middle of January, middle of December, probably at the end of the time that we have to say, these are the exhibits and things that we're going to do. Now, fortunately, most of that is created. You just have to go ahead and put it in a, in a format that you're comfortable using for presentations.
Okay. So, we've got a plan for next week. Any other last minute comments, anything to go? Okay. I'm going to close the meeting. We'll go for informational discussion items. Anybody have anything for status reports or communications?
When we were at the League of Oregon Cities, they talked about building officials, and was it legal for them to be working at more than one city? Wasn't that how they said that, Brandon? So, I just wanted to know since our... So I just wanted to know since our building official works in Manzanita and also the city of Astoria, how that fits or how that can work.
The contracts were all run by Barry Elton, and they didn't give us any caution saying that we should not be doing that. I'm aware that there's real issues with hiring contractors, and that's why, and because there's so few building officials, in fact, I've met one of the rarest birds in the world, which is a young building official. I happen to be called the son, but that's the youngest person I've ever seen who had an interest in becoming a building official. But other than that, they're all like my age or older. So we are, we do have to share, and because we have one, we contract with Seaside, and Seaside comes here and we can help Seaside, that sort of thing. So I've not heard of anything saying that we can't at this point.
It was mentioned by Wendy at the LLC.
She might have been referring to the third party issue that's happening right now.
She referred to both of them, so I don't have a response to it, other than that that's what was said.
I'll ask Ashley about that. Fortunately, we have one, but I don't think any of us are going to be able to survive very long if we can't have backing, having our people, we've always had, you know, local agreements to back each other up, but let me find out about that. That's a valid point.
Sounded like a new situation.
It sounded like a side issue to the third party inspection.
I think that's, because I've heard that a couple times with some other cities that were saying...
I think it's highly unlikely that they would go after small cities that are doing this.
Because what's going to happen is that your building projects stop.
Yes.
And just the fact that if we, you know, if Alton were to get sick or something like that, and I would, we would use the county. And so that's an intergovernmental exchange.
And they've specifically mentioned that, that that wasn't a problem.
Huh, okay.
Imagine what a story would do if we weren't sending Alton up there.
I think too, don't want to...
I was at that meeting also, and my take on what Wendy said was that they're still waiting for the rules to be written, and DOJ is, she thinks that they're going to be looking at how many different cities one building official might be serving. So it's not affecting us right this minute, but she was looking into the future for us.
Yeah, and the rules changes going to be...
Thank you.
That kind of leads into a little bit, I had a nice mayor communications here. I went to a conference this last week and had a long chat with Dogami. I know we were concerned a little bit about the inundation line and how the legislature just essentially removed the whole concept of public or critical and essential facilities within, below the inundation, which the state has just said, we're not going to worry about What has happened is that they're guiding it towards the building codes, and the building codes will essentially develop a tsunami-resistant building code that can be built only within a certain area. That is not even close to being defined yet. They're waiting for, the state is going to wait for the feds' building official to create a tsunami code so that we can adopt it, so that we can use it. Meanwhile, we can build anything we want on the beach. Not really, but that's kind of the sense of it. I will tell you right now that in a room of 100-plus mayors, two of them disagreed with that concept. They were all mad as hops about the whole idea. So that was intriguing. Oddly enough, the two mayors that did, or were agreeing with the current situation, which is to eliminate the inundation line, were two southern coastal cities. So, interesting. So that was just a little sidebar that kind of fits into the building code thing. So who knows when and where that's going to happen? There was strong consideration that it might pop up in the short session. Who knows? I'm trying to think, anything else that is worth talking about for the, from the conference? I can't think of it right now because I'm pretty numb, so.
One other thing that those of us that attended the League of Cities was kind of surprised that Wendy Johnson said that was her last day. And so she is now working for alcohol, tobacco, or somebody's an attorney. She had past experience as an attorney, and they have not hired her replacement yet, so we hope they hire somebody really, really, really good.
She sure did a good job.
Yeah. Yes, and she got a round of applause for her past efforts.
I heard a name, and I can't remember it. They're getting close, I think, to finding somebody.
Good, I hope they can announce something soon.
Somebody did say that in order to fill Wendy's position, they might have to hire three people.
Right, yes.
I believe it.
That might be good, too, so. There was one breakout session that I almost attended, which was how to manage your city manager. I went to ethics instead, so it's okay.
I went to one that was, they were talking about council, and there was a guy in Minnesota, and he talked about all this trials and tribulations with this new person, kind of a prominent person. And towards the end of it, he mentioned that his new city manager, his name is Jesse Ventura. This guy, because that's how he started in politics, and I mean, to have Jesse Ventura go ahead and cut his teeth in your city, I don't...
The mayors have a really interesting forum where they all get together and really complain about their city councils. Very entertaining, also very promising to realize I have one that's really nice to work with. Some of these folks are scary. Beyond that, unless anybody else has anything else?
I don't know if this, but I have been in contact with Joanne Wright out at KMUN, and because we don't seem to have any newspaper coverage, and I won't get into my problems with that.
What reporter here tonight?
There is, there is a reporter.
Would you like to?
I am, I'm a historian.
You're a historian?
It's a reporter, I don't...
Yay! Please keep coming. Anyway, thank you. I'm glad. Gee, I'm surprised. Anyway, Joanne has asked us if we are interested in having KMUN record our city council meetings. And I looked in our website, because I know we record them, but they don't, the recordings aren't always posted on the website that I've seen. There were a few that were posted, but the actual recordings are not. So I'm kind of wondering what our process is for that. And when I told her that we recorded our council meetings and had them on, you know, had some of them anyway, on the website, she said they could use those recordings and turn them into podcasts for KMUN Radio on the Coast Community website. So I don't know if we're interested in that. It's one way to get the news out that we actually exist and we're doing things or not, but, so I don't know if we want to do that or not.
Yeah, and I think it's possible. I think that, based on my review of the recordings, it's not great quality.
No.
Because, you know, I turn away from the mic, and so I kind of get lost a little bit. Comments from the audience don't get picked up at all. So it could go out, but it's not a great representation.
No, it's not, but it's something.
Yes.
They do record the Astoria City Council meetings, and they do record the Port of Astoria Commission meetings.
I think they do the county also.
They might do the county. Well, yeah, I'm not sure. But anyway, I don't know how you all feel about that, or if I should pursue it or not. She asked me if I wanted to do the recording, and I said I wasn't really too interested in doing that because I don't want to be responsible for that, but I don't know how you feel about it, what our process is for doing that.
I think if you're going to do something like that, everybody needs to be thinking about, they're in the radio business, because we tend to have conversations in my turn. Every conversation you have has got to be to the mic, and sometimes that's hard to do, but if you're willing to do that...
Well, I don't, yeah, and I understand that, and I don't want to put a pressure on anybody to be, you know, on radio or anything.
Right, that's...
I think they just have to accept what we've got.
Right.
I mean, if you're sitting clear back from the mic, you're sitting clear back from the mic. I mean, I don't want to go through that kind of, you know, presence, but...
But we can make it available to them, but that's the desire of the council. I mean, we can make it available to them if they ask for it, because it's public.
Play the whole prayer goodbye.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, and I think, and I don't know what the criteria is, is whether or not one of our meetings takes the website or not, I don't know, but I can check that.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to know that. But yeah, I'll tell her to, I'll ask her to get in touch with you then.
Okay, sure.
Okay. I would like to remind everybody of the Community Grants Potluck Monday, September 23rd at 6:00 P.M. Starring Barb.
Yay!
I remember those meetings.
And we'll have several other opportunities to announce that again. I want people to show up this time.
Just very likely, we have one thing before we go.
Okay.
As you know, we started a process a while back about getting phones for the council. The reason is, many of you use your phones to check your city email. Potentially, that makes your phones, your personal phones discoverable if there's any kind of an issue. We don't want to have that, and so we said we would buy phones, and that's where we would, you know, send the, our mail and that sort of thing. We finally have them, and if anybody wants to come in and get theirs, if you call and make an appointment with Rusty, and he's tried to get them all set up and can show you how to use them and all those kinds of things. And I think you all asked for iPhones, and that's what we got, so it must be what you're used to.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's now just a matter of calling Rusty.
Okay.
Set that up. Thanks, Rusty, for doing that.
And after that?
One more, one more thing. Just a reminder that Robin and I have our coffee with the counselors on August 19th this month, 10:00 A.M. here at the City Hall. So if you have any questions or concerns or discussions or anything that you want to share with us, we'd be glad to talk to you.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.